Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Wasburg Area School District, where we are student-centered and future-focused for a world-class education. The board work session of August 14, 2023, is now called to order. Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Burlingham?
Here.
Mrs. Farrell?
Here.
Mrs. Heatherington?
Here.
Mrs. Lee?
Here.
Mr. Matson? Mr. Morve?
Here.
Mrs. Pound?
Here.
Dr. Pushcheck?
Here.
Mr. Blazer?
Present. Thank you. The Chair recognizes Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Ken Berlin, for school reports. Will we have school reports next week? Dr. Berlin?
Yes, Mr. President, we will have our principals. Yes, Mr. President, we'll have the principals introduce our new staff, and we do have quite a few to introduce to you, and we'll have some refreshments if you'd like to take a break or recess or perhaps wait until after the meeting to meet everybody.
Great. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is guest and citizen comments. No one has signed up to speak to the board today. The Chair recognizes Dr. Ken Berlin for superintendent's report.
Thanks, Mr. President. Next week, I'll have a little more formal report to share with you, but just a few items to share today going into next week. After a really busy summer of hiring, interviewing and hiring, it looks like we're going to be fully staffed from a faculty and administrator standpoint. That's about 15 individuals, two assistant principals, school psychologists, which we just talked to last week, and then about 12 teachers, and that's since around April, when we knew of retirements. And about half of those folks that we replaced were due to retirements. Officer Sokolowski, he's been our SRO at the high school and the middle school through the Sheriff's Department. He's moving on to take a full-time position with the borough in Edinburgh, the township there. So he's going to have a full-time police officer job. So congratulations to him for advancing his career. We do have a replacement for him from the Sheriff's Department, very experienced, and that would be Deputy Bowers, and he'll be doing some training with Officer Sokolowski. Actually, they should have started today, so there's going to be some field officer training. So, and through the first week of school, so he's comfortable, gets to know the students and the staff a little bit before Dan leaves. You may have noticed the carpet in the elementary is starting to come together. That was a huge job, nearly the entire elementary school. Also, the windows on, I guess it would be kind of the west side of the building, because we're turned a little bit. Those windows were replaced this summer, and that was kind of a holdover, a supply chain issue, something that we had ordered a couple of years ago. So with that and the middle school renovation, we have almost every building on the first floor, every window, critical window, covered with the 3M security film, which prevents the glass shattering and unauthorized entry. There's, I don't want to name where they are, there's a few more lower priority windows that we know about, and that'll be the next thing we do to finish off that project. So with athletics, everything started today with activities, a lot of students on the campus, which was nice to see. And I know that Mr. Engler and Mr. Carter have been working to organize a meet the Bobcats event, and I believe that's Saturday, the 22nd.
Nineteenth.
The 19th, okay, thank you. So look forward to that, so we can meet the teams and get a little preview of the season and kind of have a meet-and-greet after the summer away from each other. That's all I have for tonight. I'll have a few more items for next week, Mr. President.
Thank you. Does anybody from the board have any questions, Dr. Berlin?
I just had one quick comment.
Sure.
Or question, I guess. So I also did see that the cement work was done at the middle school and that the orange, or not orange, yellow, I'm going to call them barriers, were installed.
Okay, yes. So new sidewalk, heated sidewalk, was installed at the middle school, and we have that in front of the main entrances of the elementary out here, Ansenica. It reduces the amount of snow plowing we have to do, because it will melt a fair bit of snow and keep the ice off. And with that installation at the middle school, there were bollards, is what they're called, the yellow barriers for cars. And that was put in, that's just follow-up to our safety plan assessment, which was done by the state police about a year and a half ago. And we need to finish that project. The elementary entrance here needs a couple, and in front of Seneca, we've been looking at the best placement there. It's difficult in front of Seneca to find a good design that won't interfere with the heated sidewalk. We can't go drilling into that. So we have been talking about this. We've looked at a variety of, like, planters or cement seat-looking bollards that we could put out there. So that's, we look to finish that up next. That's a priority. Hopefully, next summer, we'll get to that, if not sooner.
Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Ms. Vicki Bendig for her finance report.
Thank you, Mr. President, for tonight. On the agenda, there are treasurer's reports from June 30th, as we didn't have a meeting in July, so they are there for you to see, but the July 30th, July 31st Treasury report, cash in the general fund, $5,375,911.8. And in the capital projects, there is currently $502,106.36. And the cafeteria fund, in that account, as of July 31st, $701,925.94. Checks already written, those are checks that have been written since the June 19th board meeting through this past Friday. That totals $1,271,155.27. And then the cafeteria checks written since June 19th totaling $64,091.5. I also have the Seneca High School Activity Fund reports, as of June 30th and July 31st. So the total in those accounts, $72,519.58 as of the 31st of June. I will have the rest of the reports, the budget versus actual, for both 2022, 23, and 23, 24, as well as the other bill lists for next week.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the board, from Ms. Bendig?
I just had a quick question. So I saw an article about the tentative state budget that is not passed but is, like, coming soon, and I saw that they got rid of, or they're putting in the free school breakfast for everybody, but then something about removing, was it something about the lunches? There was, like, a removal of a category? So now, where does that leave us?
Yes, so all students will have breakfast for free, all students that qualify for reduced lunches. So maybe there's that, there's a threshold that, once you go above it, you get free lunch, but there's a middle area where children may get reduced lunches. If they qualify for reduced lunches, they don't have to pay either. They're considered free as well. So, and again, this year, the elementary school is operating on CEP, Community Eligibility Program, so all students at the elementary center will eat breakfast and lunch for free. I'm hoping that if our numbers trend the way I think they are, that we'll be able to do the other buildings, possibly next year, hopefully at least the middle school, you know, as the kids from the elementary school move up, maybe that will be able to happen, but we won't know until April 1st, so.
Thank you. There is one item on the agenda under legal advisement for next week, the LA1 All Hazards Plan for 2023, 24. Are there any questions or discussion on that item?
Just a little, we do this every year. Last week, we met with Emergency Management Agency personnel and the Pennsylvania State Police and Erie County Sheriff's Department. We have a committee that meets every year, and we went over some items in the plan, and I can share some of that next week in my superintendent's report. There are just a few minor changes to what, how the students will handle, and teachers will handle certain drills in the school, which I can talk about next week. But other than that, it's going to look similar to last year's plan, and then I'll send out a secure link to the board members here this week, as soon as I'm done compiling all those changes, so you can take a look down through it. We generally don't share that with the public for obvious reasons, but it'll be there for you to look at, so you'll be familiar with it and can make an informed decision next week.
Thanks. Hearing no other discussion, that item will be on our agenda next week for consideration. The Chair recognizes Mr. Steve Morve for Finance.
Mr. President, currently, there are two items on the agenda. The first one is F1, some budgetary transfers. As noted, they include transferring from budget to actual, as well as moving some funds from committed fund into the ballfield scoreboard to the batting cage project, and then some small amounts remaining under the HVAC repairs back to the batting cage project as well. And then there's a little bit more for the, under the truck purchase, again, going towards the batting cage, and I believe that'll clean up everything that is necessary for the batting cage project. And then item number F2, which is purchasing program, utilizing the district to procure, or participate in the procurement program under the PA Department of General Services, which I believe that's normally called that Co-Stars program, if that's a more familiar name to folks. So those are the two items on the agenda, Mr. President, for next week.
Thank you. Is there any question or discussion on the items under Finance? Mrs. Pound?
I do. On the batting cage situation, I had a couple of questions from parents on if the team was going to get back any money that they put into the one they created, and I let them know to reach out to you guys to discuss. Because they put in, like, $3,000 or something.
Yeah, I mean, administratively, we could talk about that and come back with a recommendation. It would be a board decision to spend those funds, but it's, I mean, it's certainly something we can entertain.
Yep. Their point was that the parents and kids did all the fundraising, and then it got taken down, and...
Yeah, yeah, that's...
Unfortunately, but...
It's unfortunate how that developed, and it was necessary to put in what I think they're going to be very happy with when it's done. We just couldn't utilize what had already been started but not finished. But, yeah, I understand their concerns, and we can address that.
Is there any other questions or discussions under Finance? Hearing none, those items will be on our agenda next week for consideration. Thank you, Mr. Morve. The Chair recognizes Ms. Leah Heatherington for Building and Grounds.
Thank you, Mr. President. There will be one item, a faculty use request for next week on the agenda, as listed on our agenda for next week, and that will be all.
Thank you. Is there any question or discussion on those items under Building and Grounds?
I do have a question. Do we, I'll probably have to reach out to Steve, but do we have any insight into what they're doing in the concession stand? Because nobody reached out to us. I can reach out to Steve.
It's a newer thing I saw on the agenda.
Normally, we open for the Gertler games, so I wasn't sure what they were doing.
Follow-up with Mr. Carter.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
I just had a real quick question.
Yeah, there really does need to be people that are trained, familiar with the food service there, yeah.
Ms. Farrell?
I apologize that I don't know the calendar dates for 2024. I just see that June 7th is a Friday, and I just am wondering what day graduation would be.
Yeah, we could pull the calendar up.
I know we've been outside, but if it rains...
Graduation is the 6th.
Okay.
Get that. Perfect. It's Thursday. That always makes me happy.
Great. Hearing no other discussion, those items will be on our agenda next week for your consideration. Thank you, Ms. Heatherington. The Chair recognizes Ms. Nicole Lee for Personnel.
Thank you, Mr. President. For next week, I actually have 11 items that are under consideration. They are going to be P1, substitute additions, P2, service personnel substitute list, P3, resignations, P4, summer appointment, P5, appointments, P6, per diem letters of appointment, P7, substitute rates, P8, conference requests, P9, tuition reimbursements, P10, leave requests, and P11, the Northwest trade county intermediate unit and WASD agreement.
Thank you. Is there any question or discussion on the 11 items so far under Personnel?
Mr. President?
Dr. Pushcheck?
Just a nod to the administration for filling so many positions which look like some pretty highly qualified, capable people to add to our team of world-class education. So that's exciting to see, and I think we'll be excited to meet these people next week as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Heatherington?
Yes, I just had a question about Dr. Jablonsky. I guess I didn't understand why she can't start the beginning of the school year. Could you explain it, please?
So she's coming from Fairview, and she's a professional employee at Fairview, just like our teachers are professional, consider professional employees here under Pennsylvania School Code. So the school district they're coming from can require up to 60 days' notice before releasing them from a resignation. And the Fairview School District has decided to keep her to her contract, her teacher contract, for a transition period in the fall. So she is, she's already working with us pending retroactive improvement of her per diem letter, so she's getting familiar with the building and their routines, but when Fairview School District teacher contract starts, I think, is August...
28th.
28th, yeah. She'll have to return there until they formally release her. So she's with us until her contract obligations pick up there, and then she'll be back with us full-time when they release her. It's unusual. In 11 years as a superintendent, I've never had another school district do this to me, or to us, I should say. And of course, I've been an administrator for 23 years, and I've never seen this particular clause exercised. But, you know, it is what it is, and Dr. Jablonsky is willing to roll with it. She really is very talented, probably why they don't want to lose...
She seems very qualified to be there.
Yeah. And we're very happy to have her, and she said, hey, we're going to make it work, and I really do think it will.
Thank you.
Hearing no other discussion, those items will be on our agenda next week for consideration. Thank you, Mrs. Lee. The Chair recognizes Ms. Amanda Farrell for Policy.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have one item, which will be the first reading of the policies as outlined below.
Thank you. Is there any question or discussion on the items under Policy?
I guess I was just going to ask Dr. Berlin if he had anything. He sent out the explanation on it, but some of these, I feel like, were pretty detailed policy changes. I just didn't know if you had anything you wanted to note.
So the electronic device...
That's a good thing.
It's a clarification, really. It's pretty simple, and the principals are here if you have specific questions. The short explanation is that we've allowed students to use cell phones in hallways and at lunch in grades five through 12. But that doesn't work as well in the middle school, and it is problematic at the high school sometimes in the hallways. So the principals have recommended that it be clarified that the principals do have the authority to specify when and where cell phones are used. It's not, because the way it was worded before, it just said, "These spaces are designated as cellphone use."
So you could leave the classroom to go use your phone in the hallway?
Well, right, and then, of course, that would lead to disciplinary issues we dealt with, and I don't want to steal your thunder if there's more questions, but I know that the principals dealt with a lot of cellphone communication issues, Snapchats and things that got rolling during the school day with people going out of the classroom for one reason, but it's, there's really communication things happening that cause a disruption to the school day that we normally wouldn't be dealing with, if we could keep a little closer eye on that. Do you want to add anything, Mr. Engler?
It's about the name of the section. It's not uncommon when you're alcoholing, there's kids out of the pressure pass or something, and they're just texting all the way, you know, and that's the very reason they're out there. So we're just trying to keep kids in class as possible. So I have a team behind this, just across the board.
Great. Okay, so that's the electronic devices. Meetings, that's a board policy on how we operate and what needs voted on, and so there were some recommendations from the legal team at PSBA to move a couple of the items that previously, I think it was worded, that two-thirds of the quorum present needed to approve textbooks and emergency debt load. But if you look at school code, it's really two-thirds of the board, so it's the full board. So there was confusion at some board meetings across the state, in particular, you know, with certain controversial things that came up, where boards thought, ooh, we just need a quorum of the two-thirds of the, two-thirds of the quorum that's present here, so if there's only seven people, we need, you know. So it lowered those numbers, which would lead to votes that are not compliant with the Sunshine Law and school code. So there was a few things like that. There was some, there is some new things there at the bottom that were added regarding charter schools and multi-charter school organizations, and that's tied to changes in school code. And if you link, and this is on the public agenda, if you link on those, click on those links there, it'll take you out to the school code, and if you're having trouble sleeping, you can read that. You also need a microscope.
And a magnifying glass, yes.
Supplemental discipline records, that was a minor change. In fact, these last two ones, these last two, 216 and 251, there was a lot of changes to homelessness and educational instability. I mean, we just, we just approved a new 251 in June, and then there already were some clarifications that needed to be made that also affected a footnote and a legal citation in supplemental discipline records. So that, in a nutshell, are those changes. One recommended from the principals, and then the other ones to balance are from the legal team at PSBA. And of course, I sent these to Chris McClure, as always, and she'll weigh in if she has any concerns on those before next week.
Great. Hearing no other discussion, those items will be on our agenda next week. Oops, sorry, go ahead there.
On the voting one, so if we have a quorum, and you don't have, you have to have the full board, two-thirds, how do they vote?
So a quorum's always five, and Dr. Pushcheck is the Roberts Rules of Order expert.
Don't ask him. He just told me the not truth.
But it looks like, I don't know, the way I read that, it was like if there was a charter school vote, and let's say Sean had a emergency, couldn't be here, then I don't know if we could vote on some things.
How does that work? If we're not here...
I would think we'd have to table it.
We'd have to have a majority of the whole board.
Two-thirds of the board is six, so you would need to have six votes in the affirmative.
Gotcha, gotcha.
So the board's it, the board that would be here, I suppose you could decide to table it until you had a larger majority, but if, you know, if a vote was taken, it would have to be the six.
Okay, thanks.
Hearing no other discussion, those items will be on our agenda next week for consideration. Thank you, Mrs. Farrell. The Chair recognizes Dr. Andy Pushcheck for Critical.
Thank you, Mr. President. Three items for the board's consideration next week, the Erie County Special Education Transition Program, the preliminary third-party contractor agreement for Title I services, and the Bethesda Partial ES Agreement. Those three items for curriculum next week, Mr. President.
Thank you. Is there any question or discussion on the items under Curriculum? Hearing none, those items will be on our agenda next week for your consideration. Thank you, Dr. Pushcheck.
My pleasure.
The Chair recognizes Ms. Leah Heatherington for Technology.
Thank you, Mr. President. There is nothing under Technology for this week.
Thank you, Ms. Heatherington. The Chair recognizes Ms. Brittany Burlingham for Transportation.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will have four items underneath Transportation next week. We will have T1, which is our transportation requests, T2, the transportation agreement, T3, the bus routes of 2023 to the 2024 year, and T4, the Durham bus drivers. And that will be what I have for next week.
Thank you. Is there any question or discussion on items under Transportation? Mrs. Heatherington?
Are these the current bus drivers for this year that's listed here? Or are these, these aren't all new people?
No, no, every year, we reapprove the crew.
Okay. I just see that our bus driver's not on the list.
Me too.
I was curious.
There are a couple of new ones, but most of them are returning.
Okay.
I was curious, I've seen other districts, you know, talked about, you know, being as fully staffed as we can. Are we pretty fully staffed on bus drivers, too?
Yes, I know there's, I think there's still a couple that are finishing up their behind-the-wheel training, but we should have a full complement of drivers to run our runs as we think is most efficient and most comfortable for the students in terms of time. And we, and in addition to that, we'll have a complement of standby drivers, which, so, I mean, I don't want to jinx anything, but this...
Well, kudos to the administration and Durham for keeping those bus drivers or adding where we've lost, because I've seen other districts are not in the same position.
Yeah, Durham's done a nice job. Dorothy at the Bus Garage, she's really upped her efforts with recruiting and training now that, I mean, it's just becoming a secular thing. It's just, it's a constant process, which is the environment we're in right now, so it seems, they're having some success, which means things are going to be better for our kit.
Hearing no other discussion, those...
I had a good question. I just don't remember time-wise. We don't have to make a final vote on this before these get mailed out, correct? When does this go out?
I think we vote next week, and then it goes out, right? You mean on bus routes, right?
Bus routes.
Usually, those cards go out the middle of the week before. Did you get the little postcard yet?
I don't think so, not yet. That's why I was asking. I couldn't remember the timeline of how that happened, like, do we...
I've seen parents asking on social media.
Yeah.
Have you heard? Do we know?
Yeah, I think they're going out the 24th, because when I sent out the student letter and talked to Dorothy Dale, I said, oh, you have received any by the 25th, they're coming back to the bus garage.
So they must be waiting for our vote, it sounds like, next week?
That's typically what happens.
They're not waiting for a vote.
Thank you.
Hearing no other discussion, those items will be on our agenda next week for consideration. The Chair recognizes Ms. Tara Pound for Athletic Extracurricular.
Thank you. I have four items for next week. AE1, the volunteer list, AE2, extracurricular appointments, AE3, athletic appointments, and AE4, the summer/fall band appointments.
Thank you. Is there any question or discussion on the items under Athletic and Extracurricular?
No questions.
Mrs. Heatherington?
I'll go first.
Okay. If you're, if you are approved as a volunteer, are you always...
If you're, if you are approved as a volunteer, are you always approved, or do you have to be reapproved every year? Every five years when you get your clearances?
So every five years for volunteers.
When your clearances are renewed, like, or doesn't?
We check them, I think, every five years. Yeah, so when, we have a database that flags.
So you send out something to remind people?
Yes.
Okay.
Mrs. Pound?
Mine is just administrative. So on the summer/fall band appointments, you have monetary amounts listed, but you don't have those on any other items on the agenda. Why is that?
So, yeah, this is, this has been a practice for a long time. At band camp, they typically need a handful more of people to break the kids down into smaller groups. So that's part of the band budget line items that have been there.
These positions are not extracurricular positions in the WEA Collective Bargaining Agreement. These positions are the band director says, hey, I need some help. I've got X number of dollars in my budget. I want to split it up and pay these people to help the kids get ready for their season.
I see. And then do those people have to have all their clearances and stuff, too? Okay. That makes sense. Thank you.
Hearing no other discussion or questions, those items will be on our agenda next week for your consideration. Thank you, Mrs. Pound. There are two items on the agenda under Miscellaneous and one surplus items, the declared surplus, and M2, retention and destruction of special education, give that education in Chapter 15, Section 504 records. Is there any question or discussion on those two items under Miscellaneous? Hearing none, they'll be on our agenda next week for your consideration. Will we have an Erie County Technical School report this week or next? Mr. Morve?
So, Mr. President, the last tech school board meeting we had was in the end of June, and so I'll be able to report on that meeting next week.
Great, thank you. And for the Northwest Tri-County Intermediate Unit, Dr. Andy Pushak.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our next meeting is the Monday, the Wednesday after our meeting next week. So I will not have a report.
Thank you, Dr. Pushak. That brings us to the Board Correspondence Dialogue. Anything from the board this evening? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved, Pushak.
Second, Heatherington.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries.